Council workshop. First item we have on the agenda is the natural resource inventory. And I believe Ben Page is going to lead it off.
Members of Des Moines City Council, Ben Page, Director of Parks and Recreation. I'm going to kick this off today, but Richard Brown from our team will run you through the presentation. As Councilman Henzley said, this is the results of the natural resources inventory and the recommendations contained within. At the same time, growing communities are upgrading and expanding their built infrastructure of roads, sewers, and utilities. They also need to preserve, upgrade, and expand their green infrastructure. The wealth of plant life living in these green spaces sustains clean air and clean water. They also provide a wide array of benefits to people and wildlife. By planning and managing urban parks as part of an interconnected green space system, cities can reduce flooding impacts and stormwater management costs. Parks also protect biological diversity and preserve essential ecological functions while serving as a place for recreation and civic engagement. Our city has an historic park system with a wealth of ecological benefits. So today, Richard Brown's presentation will address just how important preservation is and management of our open space systems for our citizens today and future generations. Before Richard starts, we do have a couple citizen advocate groups here, as you're well aware of. We have members of our Urban Conservation Committee, and we also have members of our Park and Recreation Board led by Susan Nolan here. I want to thank them for being here and being very helpful to this initiative. Without further ado, Richard Brown.
Thank you, Ben. Members of the Des Moines City Council, Richard Brown, Park Planner 3. Today, we're here to talk about the natural resource inventory. This is the effort of a nearly two-year project to inventory our natural resources across the park and open space system. We'll talk a little bit about how we got here, how we went through this process, some of the major findings and conclusions that we found throughout the inventory, and then moving forward, how we're going to go ahead and utilize the inventory and management of the park and open space system. A little bit of background here. This really has been a result of a change in how we've managed our park and open space system over the last five to six years. We're looking at more natural management, increased natural vegetation, decreasing some of our inputs, the fertilizers we put on the ground, we're trying to do less of that, and we're looking at different ways to improve our waller quality, reforesteding our areas that have had trees lost over the years, and restoring land. We have historic landscapes here in the city of Des Moines. So we're looking at a lot of different ways to improve our management. This project was really the result of a new trail connection at McHenry Park. As part of the Birdland Levy Project, a new accessible trail was constructed to McHenry Park, and the city council authorized that as part of a master plan for McHenry Park. And ultimately, a new ecologically sound landscape out there that could serve a better wildlife and ecological benefits to the park, but also to the city of Des Moines. As part of that, the city issued a competitive RFP. We looked for the most qualified bidder out there. We had a series of about five bidders, and Dr. Tom Rosberg was hired in April 2011 by the city council to do the natural resource inventory. Dr. Rosberg is one of the Midwest's most respected botanists and comes with a lot of experience across the state of Iowa and the upper Midwest identifying and really looking at landscapes like this. We asked him to inventory nearly 4,000 acres across the city of Des Moines, from our parks to the open spaces along the Des Moines and Raccoon Rivers, to our golf courses, cemeteries, and the areas around our sports complexes. The natural resource inventory is an in-depth look at our natural resources. But when we say "in-depth," that does not mean that we counted every tree out there. It looks at the overall landscape and how they all work together and the overall health. It was giving us the data to make our informed recommendations and decisions to the city council and other elected and appointed officials. And finally, it's an opportunity and it's a tool for us to help the city in its assessment through the STAR Community Rating System. This is important because our park system sees millions of visits each year. Past surveys have shown us that our citizens, as well as the visitors to our park system, they want to be able to experience our natural areas. They want to be able to get out there. They want to be able to get out in nature, and they want to be able to see the park system different from going into a sports complex or going on one of our paved trails or using a playground. And also, it helps us to assess our natural resource help, looking at the overall park and open space system. What is the health of it? What are the areas that need help? What areas need protection? And what areas are really pretty good right now? One of the things we're trying to do is we're trying to reduce our maintenance costs. With limited budgets, we have to find ways to be able to still maintain the park and open space system at a reduced cost or a more effective cost. We also need to be able to protect important landscapes. In the photo here, McRae Park has been protected by the city of Des Moines for nearly 120 years, as well as several other parks within our open space system. These are important historic landscapes that provide some of the cultural and ecological history of our city. We also need to be able to provide ecosystem services, services that absorb our storm water when it rains, provide recreational opportunities, and find ways for people to get out in nature. We're seeing more and more people want to get out, get away from the playgrounds and other areas, and really see what our open spaces have to offer. One of the things we asked Dr. Rosberg to do, we asked him to map all of our plant communities. We asked him to go out, walk through our park and open space system, tell us what the overall health of them is. What does it look like? And how is it, how moving forward, how can we best assess our management options? And finally, we realized that we probably had some pretty important historic landscapes out there. So we asked him, with limited dollars, how do we go about prioritizing these and moving forward with restoration efforts? He did this through a series of different methodologies. First thing he did is went out and found some of the historical context. Aerial photos from the 1930s are available all the way up to today. There's also soil maps, as well as land office maps from the early 1850s when the city was settled, to give him some historical context, what the city looked like at that time and what it looks like now. He spent entire spring, summer, and fall walking through all of our park and open space system three times. He went out in the spring to see what was out there, what was blooming in the summer, and what was blooming in the fall, to really give him a large context of our park and open space system. He took all that information and he mapped it out and put it into a series of GIS maps. We now, as the city of Des Moines, have all of this information mapped into our GIS system that we can share with different departments and different people that we work with. He compiled all of the data. We expect that once the report is completely finalized, it'll be almost 1,000 pages of information about our park and open space system that Dr. Rosberg has compiled, put together, and created assessments from. Also, he has given scores of the ecosystem health of each one of these plant communities, and finally, a series of recommendations on how we can manage each community, but also look at the system as a whole and manage it that way. Some of the major conclusions that Dr. Rosberg has found out there. The Des Moines Park and Open Space System contains substantial ecological quality. For example, this flower here is a prairie trillium on the right, and that was found at Prospect Park. He found just one of them, but in talking to me, he said that's the farthest west that's ever been found in the state of Iowa, and it's the only time it's been found in Polk County. So we have some really unique and interesting things in our park system that provide a lot of ecological quality out there. Secondly, invasive species threaten the overall quality and function of every park. We have a lot of invasive species out there that are starting to impact how our park system looks and how it functions. And finally, we have a series of degraded oak savannas in some of our most oldest and historic parks that should be targeted for restoration. Just to kind of put this in a little bit into numbers, Dr. Rosberg has found over 651 total species in the Des Moines Park and Open Space System. That represents nearly a third of all the species that are found in the state of Iowa. So across our 4,000 acres, nearly one-third of all species in the state of Iowa can be found here in the city of Des Moines. And also, to talk about kind of the conservative quality or the value of this, nearly 17% of the species are conservative. What he means when he said that is that 17% of all these species need very pristine, unique environments to grow. And the fact that we have 17% of them shows that the city of Des Moines has very high quality in our park and open space system. Just related to some of those areas around the state of Iowa, this is more species and high quality than several counties in the entire state, and is comparable to Legis State Park, which is considered one of the state's biological jewels, and very similar to White Rock Conservancy, which is a privately-owned park and open space system in west-central Iowa, similar in size to the Des Moines Park System. Some of our historic landscapes, we have the fortune that our forefathers purchased almost 600 acres of land in the late 1890s. Grandview Park, this photo is from an early 1900s annual report from the Des Moines Park Board, but Greenwood, McRae, Union, Waveland are all parks that we've had in our system for nearly 120 years and are the areas that they found some of the highest ecological value and the highest potential for restoration. Across the system, he found nearly 80 different diverse ecosystems, from grasslands to shrublands, savannas, woodlands, forests, and wetlands. Just to give you an example, the map on the right shows all the varying plant communities that he found. The top right of the photo up here is McHenry Park, followed by Riverview, and then the Des Moines River, and Prospect Park and Crocker Woods. We now have GIS data for the entire park and open space system that tells where each one of these plant communities are, what species are found in them, and some of the overall assessment and ecological health of each area. Invasive species, this is one of the biggest things he talked about, and invasive species by definition are a species that is non-native to the ecosystem under consideration and whose introduction causes or is likely to cause economic or environmental harm to human health. Through this process, Dr. Rosberg found 12 species that pose the greatest threat to our park and open space system. These are just plant species. These don't talk about species such as insects or other problems out there. He's found that these invasive species are threatening our park and open space system, and really that most of our parks have an invasive species problem of some type. Just at the bottom here are three photos of three different ones out of the top 12. The bottom left is garlic mustard. We're starting to see that take over several of our parks. Greenwood Park has a large infestation of it, as well as several other parks. The middle photo is Tree of Heaven. A good infestation of that is found at Waveland Golf Course at the very northwest corner at 56th Street and University Avenue. And this one here is Japanese bamboo, or knotweed, that is starting to take over in some of these areas. And a lot of these plants, once they take over, will cause significant takeover of the entire landscape, and that'll be the only species that's left, reducing a lot of our biodiversity and the plants that make it resilient. Another invasive species that Dr. Rosberg found and talked about was the Emerald Ash Bore. What he said is the Emerald Ash Bore threatens our ash trees, and through his inventory, the green ash tree is the most prevalent species, any species within the city of Des Moines Park and Open Space System. And he noted that the likely demise of the green ash will cause a significant ecological disturbance throughout our park and open space system. So something we need to be looking at and working with municipal arborists to see at the impacts of that and plan for that. Despite some of these issues, we have a lot of really neat opportunities that will allow us to move forward. We have the historic landscapes that we talked about. We want to be able to find ways to reduce our maintenance costs, improve our water quality by looking at how we manage our landscapes, as well as increase the utilization of our park and open space land. Only about 15% of the 4,000 acres are available to recreation right now. That's through trails or playgrounds or other areas. So that means about 85% of our area can be utilized for other opportunities such as birdwatching, nature trails, hiking, walking, just about any passive recreation. And overall, increases a lot of neat opportunities for the citizens of Des Moines out there. How are we going to go ahead and utilize this inventory? This really is an opportunity for us to provide leadership in what we do. We can be leaders in the city of Des Moines in providing green infrastructure and how we manage our park and open space system. It's an opportunity for us to improve our water quality through diverse landscapes and reducing a number of invasive species. Also, we can reduce our maintenance costs and make sure we protect those historic landscapes. We're in a unique opportunity to do so. We're using this inventory from a leadership standpoint because it's helping us to prioritize areas for implementation. The data in the inventory is helping to track and implement some of our green infrastructure projects, give us a baseline where we started, and then a follow-up to where we're going after we do some of this work. And finally, this information from the inventory is assisting us in the ability to write and receive grants and supplement limited city dollars. For example, we've received grants for Greenwood Park watershed to improve the watershed there above the pond. We also recently received information from the DNR that we received a grant for McRae Park to help restore the landscape there. So this has really been information that we have helped to assist in developing more funds for the city of Des Moines. Improve water quality. A higher diversity of plants increases our ability to absorb water in the ground, making sure that less of it goes into some of our creeks and rivers. Provides less erosion and sediment into our water bodies. We've been doing a lot of work out at Greenwood Park, trying to reduce the amount of sediments going into that pond and some of the pollution issues we're having out there. And finally, there's a lot of opportunities for us to minimize the flooding impacts in our park and open space system, areas that we could develop wetlands and absorb and clean more water out there. Reducing maintenance costs is one of our key points we want to do. Prescribed burns is a great way for us to manage a large landscape with a very minimal cost. Example here is a woodland burn that Polk County did out in one of their areas. These are very small fires that slowly move along the land. They burn up the leaf vegetation there, reduce some of the invasive species. And a great opportunity is it actually triggers natural tree regeneration. This photo here at the bottom right is a photo from McRae Park where we've been doing prescribed burns for about 10 years now, and we're starting to see a lot of trees regenerate. You can see all these small little oak trees are starting to grow out there at McRae Park. It actually can reduce some of the costs for us not having to purchase additional trees to be planted in these landscapes. Additionally, we can look at areas to reduce our turf mowing and overall have more resilient landscapes that require less maintenance. When we look at our ecosystem restoration, we have a lot of opportunities, and historic landscapes is one of those. Oak savannas and oak woodlands are one of the most historic and endangered landscapes across the Midwest, if not the entire country. We have significant examples in McRae, Grandview, Pioneer, Prospect, and Greenwood that we can protect and preserve these areas. Additionally, Dr. Rosberg found that compared to when the city was founded in the 1850s, prairie areas are the most underrepresented landscape that we now have in the city of Des Moines. He also found that there are areas across just about every one of our parks that could be converted, in some small areas, some larger areas, to prairie areas that could help with a better landscape, provide more educational opportunities, and reduce maintenance costs from reducing the amount of mowing we do. And finally, he also found some areas in the park and open space system that could be converted to wetlands to absorb more of that water and help with some of our flooding Some of the next steps, we need to continue to present the results to staff and to the public. We're getting a lot of requests now that this is starting to wrap up to learn more about what's going on, what we have in our system. We need to take the inventory, and we need to prioritize our needs. And finally, budget for the implementation. We need to prioritize within our limited capital budget on what's the most important projects. We need to continue to seek the alternative funding such as grants from the DNR and other opportunities. We need to investigate the opportunity of maybe hiring a natural resource superintendent, equivalent to the municipal arborist, to help manage these landscapes for us. And finally, we need to work with our friends at Des Moines, with our friends at Des Moines Parks, and look at volunteers and other fundraising opportunities to really assist us in moving forward with this and protecting these unique and historic landscapes. And I'll just leave you at this. This actually comes from a 1928 manual on municipal and county parks. It says, "City dwellers need, above all things, to renew frequent contact with soil and growing things, to engage in activities that are different from the daily routine of living and working. The most basic of all planning measures is the preservation of open spaces in such numbers and with such areas, both within and without city limits, that the majority of people can easily frequent them, thereby getting away from congested living and working places into spaces where the air is unrestricted movement and is reasonably clean and pure." Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Chip?
Richard, early on, you said one of the goals of this is less use of fertilizers. Could I assume that also means pesticides?
Correct, yes.
Did this inventory include the golf courses?
Yes, it did.
Thank you.
Question?
Proceed.
Great presentation, just wonderful information. Two comments, though. When you talk about the maintenance costs being decreased, do you have any idea as to what that number might be? I mean, are you looking at a 20% decrease, a 10%, 5% decrease in maintenance?
No, at this time, we don't know exactly how much it would cost. We have general numbers from people that have done more natural land management across the country, but we need to work with each neighborhood and each park system to see where areas we could reduce that, because that's one of the things that we need to balance with the neighborhoods on what areas they would like to see mowed and not mowed. So that's something we'd have to go through with each park and open space area.
Okay, then my last question is, overall costs. If you had an unlimited budget and you were to go in and do everything that is outlined here and had all the resources, do we have any idea what that cost would be?
No, Dr. Rosberg didn't assign a cost to that. We have worked with different contractors in the past, and we have kind of a variable cost depending on how much work needs to be done in each area, but we haven't added it up at this point.
Are you afraid to?
I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
When are the planned burns scheduled to start?
Generally, burn season is after the first hard freeze and can go all the way through April. What we do is we send out notices to every property owner within 1,000 feet of our park and open space areas to get a burn, and then we also put out press releases the day before.
How are you the only one that hasn't said anything?
I'm good.
Okay.
Just congratulations to Richard and Ben and the whole staff. It's great, great piece of work. Christine, to your question about the money, one of the things that you might want to think about is we've talked about creating a development office that could do private fundraising in a more organized, aggressive sort of way. This, in my view, really lends itself to that kind of thing, where you could take particular areas and raise funds around those particular efforts. So I think it's one way going forward, given all of our limitations with funding, if we try to build this into some sort of a development campaign, it might work really well, might really lend itself to that kind of an initiative. Just a comment, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Right. Well, seeing nothing else in that category, let's move on to the debt management policy and franchise fee borrowing update from finance and the new policy revisions, which will be considered November 4th. Mr. Sanders?
Good morning, Mayor, City Council members. You should have a couple attachments in front of you, debt management program. Copy for each of you on that. Okay, this morning, I have two topics to cover with you. The debt management program update, as well as an introduction to the franchise fee debt issuance, and how that will fit in to our debt management policies. So what exactly is in a debt management policy? The elements that you'll see throughout the document talk about reporting requirements. As you might imagine, both the SEC and the IRS are spending more time looking at debt issuances of cities, making sure that the cities have covered themselves with the proper procedures, that the reporting that is necessary is getting done. And a lot of that reporting has to do with different events that may occur through the life of a bond issue. Changes in credit ratings, changes in revenue numbers can sometimes trigger additional filings. And then towards the end of a bond issue, we found that we're oftentimes refunding those bond issues. So there are additional reporting requirements to let the market know when we intend to refinance bonds as well. So there's a whole life of reporting that's required of each debt issuance. So a lot of the program document in front of you is simple procedures that the finance department needs to manage. So that's my responsibility and the staff in the finance department. What you will find towards the end are two appendices that are actual council-directed policies, more specific to how much debt capacity the council's willing to utilize, and also fund balance policies, which get to the heart of the discussion about credit, making sure that there's sufficient funds on hand to pay the city's bills, and if needed, to pay the debt service on bond issues. So the elements that will be in front of you for approval on November 4th, two weeks from now, are the two appendices. Those are the council decisions to make about how much debt capacity and the fund balance. I'll talk about those more in later slides. There's also, within those, discussions about whether to issue GO bonds or revenue bonds for the enterprise funds that the city manages. That would be your sanitary sewer, stormwater, parking, and solid wastes. Also, within the program are discussions about credit rating strategies. And what you'll find is that the rating agencies are increasing their expectations of issuers with more policies such as this being formalized and approved by the governing body, as well as providing more detail as to how the ratings are established. Lastly, here, the S&amp;P, I wanted to remind you that we have a AAA with them on our GO bonds, and with Moody's, we have a AA1, which is their second-best rating that's available. As you might imagine, with some of the struggles that other cities across the country, the credit rating agencies are spending more time looking at why municipal finances are struggling. And one of the big answers that continues to resonate is the pension costs. And so they have decided, both at S&amp;P and Moody's, to completely revamp and provide more transparency as to what their methodologies are and how they actually rate cities. Now, this can be helpful to us because they're providing, for the first time, actual detail on what the numbers are behind the ratings. You know, prior to this, we essentially had a AAA rating from S&amp;P, but we didn't know all the detail that built that rating. We do know that there's 12, or have known that there's 12 to 15 different factors that they look at, but they would never really tell anyone exactly what ranges they were looking at. Well, that's new, in that they're now going to actually provide us those percentage ranges, and we'll actually know some of the measurable factors and how we might be able to improve those at the city of Des Moines. So it's both a little bit exciting to be able to see behind the curtain, if you will, how those numbers are stacked up, but at the same time, it will tell us how secure we are in our ratings, and if we need to be looking at potentially making improvements in the factors that we do have control over. One of the things that they're talking about, and understand that they're not completed yet, the new methodology, they're out for public comment, and probably in about the next month or two at the latest, we'll have all the final details from both S&amp;P and Moody's on exactly what those measurements and those ratings are. So there's a decreased focus, is what they're talking about, on the economic measurements, the things like the valuations of the city, both the actual values and the taxable. But they're going to increase more of their focus on how much debt is being issued, and they're going to treat pension funds more closely to debt obligations. And so that's where most of our focus will be with the newer information, is how are they going to treat pension obligations? We'll have an opportunity to speak in the future about how GAZB and the accounting world is going to be looking at pension funds differently over the next two years as well. Moody's and S&amp;P realize that and want to somewhat get ahead of that and put their own standards out there, if you will, of what they consider a pension obligation that's manageable and sustainable. They're also going to look forward, forward-looking elements, and this is somewhat new as well. You may have heard me talk before that oftentimes, when it comes to credit ratings, even when we know that there's a difficult time ahead of us due to whatever factors, the credit rating agencies have typically waited for that time to be present and then see how the city would react, making sure that they're managing through that difficult time, if tax rates need to be increased, if spending needs to be cut back, or if fund balances need to be increased. They have typically, in the past, waited for those difficult times to arrive and then make a judgment as to how they respond. Now, they're actually talking about things like pension obligations in the future as having weight today. And so they're doing more projections, they're actually asking the issuers to do longer-term projections as well. And so this is an area that has me a little more concerned, because this would mean we'd have to understand our finances may be out even further than three or four years that we're typically looking at. And so I'll be keeping a close eye on how much weight the credit agencies give this forward-looking prospect and issues that they may discover. So even though they're going to provide more transparency in the ranges and the numbers, everything that's measurable, they obviously want to leave themselves the caveat or the opportunity to say, "Well, you may have these measurements, but we still think you're a AAA or something lower," if they see concern, especially, and I believe, what they'll see in the forward-looking elements. So obviously, they still want to leave a little bit of subjectivity in the ratings, but at least they will start everyone out with the measurable numbers. So what exactly does this mean for us? Well, for the finance, we need to understand each of those elements that are going to be provided, the ranges, and then determine just how strong our AAA is with S&amp;P and the AA. and the AA1 with Moody's. As you might imagine, city manager's office and finance have talked about, what would it take to get Moody's to give us the AAA best standard that they have available to us? And that's been difficult in the past because, again, they didn't provide us, "Well, if you attain another 3% on your fund balance, we'll give it to you." They've never wanted to really give that type of direction. But now with their new standards and their new methodology, again, we're going to be able to see better where our weaknesses are and what improvements we may be able to make. They are going to reward cities and issuers for having these type of formal programs in place. It is a question that gets brought up frequently as to what is the city's fund balance policy? And in the past, we've said, "Well, it's pretty well-known, we want to keep 10% of our annual expenditures in reserve as an extra fund balance." But we never had an official action by the council that said that. And so on November 4th, two weeks from now, that will be part of the action asked of the council is to formally adopt a 10% unassigned general fund balance as the minimum for the city. The other element that I spoke about was the debt limit that will be approved by the council or put in front of the council as well, how much debt to issue as general obligation. So the other thing then will be what improvements can we make? Obviously, of these 12 to 15 factors, there are several of them that deal with demographics that are not easy to change. They may deal with economic development in the sense of getting more tax base created, higher tax base. That's a slow process, that's not something we can change in a year or two even. Seeking out alternative revenues, we might find could be very helpful to our credit rating agency. Our property tax dependency also means that we collect a lot of our property taxes two times a year, so that there's been more questions from the rating agencies about how is the city performing mid-year? Clearly, there's been a strong focus on June 30th, the last day of the fiscal year, but they want to look deeper into mid-year as well. So there may be some suggestions and recommendations that come out about how we handle mid-year as well. So all this talk about credit rating agents, ratings, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that what that means for the city is lower interest rates on our debt. And that's really the key. We want to keep our borrowing costs as small and as minimal as possible. And so although there's this background discussion of all the credit ratings and we want to have the best credit ratings available, it's not the most important thing, even financially. Obviously, we want to provide municipal services at the most cost-effective methods as possible. Now, interest cost on debt is just one piece of our financial book, and credit rating agencies will play a role in that. So what exactly is our debt limit today, and what's the policy that we've adhered to in the past? By state constitution, we have a 5% of total actual valuation as our cap. So we have over $10 billion, about $10.9 billion actually, in valuation on the books today. So 5% of that is $545 million in allowed general obligation debt that the city can incur. Currently, we have about $412 million, so we're utilizing about 75% of the state's limit. So that leaves an opportunity to continue using a little bit of that GO capacity for our enterprise funds. If sanitary sewer is struggling, there's an opportunity to issue a little of their debt as GO. Still pay for that debt from sewer revenues, but we would get a lower interest rate because of the GO credit being stronger than any of our utilities would ever be able to attain. I can tell you that the credit rating agencies will always look at property taxes, I shouldn't say always, but they always have looked at property taxes as a stronger credit than what any utility could generate in revenues. So currently, the city's policy, this is a self-imposed, to limit the GO debt to 80% of what the state allows. That's equivalent to 4% of the valuation. And then the city does, the policy does allow for borrowing costs for the enterprise funds to issue the GO debt. So the two appendices that are at the back of your debt management program go into the detail about the debt limit policy as well as the fund balance policy. On a debt limit policy, this has been the case for years, that the city would utilize no more than 80% of the legal debt capacity. And the new addition would be that that would be for capital expenditures. And what you'll hear me talk about is that's different than like the need debt for the franchise fee, which does not have a capital expenditure behind it. Secondly, to utilize the bond proceeds only for capital outlays, this is standard. Obviously, we're not going to want to go out and borrow for ongoing operating costs. So this just needs to be in there, again, to give the credit rating agencies comfort that we would not do that. Maintain the debt service levy at as low as possible market rates as far as they would allow. Obviously, we just want to get as low as interest rate as possible. Structure the debt for the shortest reasonable maturities. Our debt typically is 20 years, and that is tied to the useful life of the capital expenditures that we're making. Clearly, we want to make sure that the payment on any capital expenditure is tied to how long we plan to be able to use that asset. And 20 years is what we've used in the past. Structure each debt issuance with the earliest and cost-effective call date. That's the opportunity to refinance. We have typically had call dates about eight years out from when we issued the debt originally. That gives us a chance within eight years then to refinance the remaining 12 years that are beyond that eight-year period. And actually, because of the interest rate environment over the last 10 years, we've actually refinanced every bond issue that has come due at that eight-year period. And I would expect that to continue as long as the short-term rates remain low. In other words, one to eight years, as long as those interest rates remain low, we'll still have that opportunity to continue refinancing. If the long-term rates go high on us, that actually doesn't affect the refinancing ability, it's the shorter term that calls that. The last two have been added, if you will, in the last year. The issuance of GO bonds, as I mentioned, in place of revenue bonds. But this will only occur if we're not putting the GO ratings at risk. All our utilities are able to borrow, depending on the constraints that each utility may have, they may find that they would have very high interest rates, we have to be careful there. But it's not like our utilities couldn't borrow if they needed to. And so if there was determined that we needed to stop doing that, or that the council was not comfortable doing that anymore, we could find ways to finance capital in the utility funds and reserve the GO for only normal CIP-type projects.
Can I just interrupt there, Scott? Because this is a very important point here, and you talked about this last year, and it has to do with the suggestion of using a GO bond to finance enterprise debt. And if you can do that, you really lower your cost in the enterprise accounts. It makes sense to do that if you've got, if you have the capacity in your GO limits to do it. This evaluation, whether you go with a GO debt or an enterprise debt for your enterprise accounts, is going to have to be a case-by-case analysis. And as our GO limits go up, your decision about that is going to have to be more and more conservative in terms of utilizing that limited capacity you have. And this is a key point. We can't make a blanket policy about always using GO policy to fund revenue or enterprise debt, but on a case-by-case basis, if it looks like there's capacity there, then that could very well be a prudent decision. It has to be a case-by-case, in my view, and I think Scott would agree.
So that covers the debt limit policy. The fund balance policy, as I mentioned, would be 10% of annual expenditures kept aside in unassigned fund balance. And so every year with our June 30 CAFR, our audit, the numbers in there would show exactly how much is unassigned and compare that to annual expenditures. And in case you don't remember, we are just over the 10% at this point in time. In fact, I think we're probably close to 11%. We also want to make sure that throughout the year, as I spoke earlier, mid-year, that we have sufficient general fund cash liquidity to pay our current expenses. One of the things the credit rating agencies found with other cities is that their June 30 numbers looked very healthy, but through the year, they were borrowing funds from other funds and whatnot. The opportunity for us to also look at number two here is we have our new software for the finances that we can look mid-year a little better to understand maybe when transfers occur and things of that nature. So that's a burden that I need to take on as far as making sure that the transfers are occurring more than just once at the end of the year between funds. And so that will be helpful to this factor as well. And then lastly, the enterprise funds, similar to the unassigned fund balance, they have a working capital balance, and we want to maintain about 15% of annual expenditures there. That number, we'll watch carefully as the credit rating agencies change their methodology to make sure that that would be sufficient to keep strong ratings on our utilities as well. So none of this is actually in stone, but we believe by having these policies in place, we should be able to maintain the ratings that we have. So that really covers the first discussion about the debt management policy. The second discussion for this morning was the $41 million in GO bonds that need to be issued for that settlement. The size is $41 million, and we're looking at an eight-year amortization schedule that would go out to 2022. And I can lower that. And so the first six years you'll see on there, on the far column to the right, the annual debt service is a little over $3 million a year. The idea was we first scheduled, we first put together a 20-year bond issue to see how we would pay for the $41 million obligation, and we came up with a little over $3 million annual level payment. And so we've kept that the same for the six years. But then knowing that we want to pursue, or that the option to pursue, a seven-year franchise fee increase gave us a funding source that we may be able to utilize. The 2.5% franchise fee increase would be $5.5 million a year in revenue. So that $5.5 million would be in excess of what would be needed on this bond issue. So that means that we needed to have an opportunity to call in some of this debt early. And so what we're doing with this eight-year structure is these last two years of principal are allowed to be called in early if additional revenue becomes available, such that we can then pay off as much of this debt as possible. And the question that, with a lot of variables, we don't know the answer to yet, is if we'd have enough funds to pay all of this off, the full $41 million. Looking at the projections that I have today, there may actually be $4 or $5 million left over that would need to be refinanced over the next 12 years, once we get through this first eight-year structure. So I kind of want to let that sink in, go back for me to the...
Scott, question...
Yes.
You're saying $41 million, but our council agenda says $42.
Right. So the hearing tonight is a not-to-exceed amount of the $42 million. And what we'll do the day before the sale is determine, not the day before, but for the November 4th council meeting, is determine the exact amount of debt. One of the variables that's changing most fluidly on us is how much interest cost we might have to pay after the judge makes the final determination. That's called the post-judgment interest cost. And so right now, we've structured a little over $300,000 of that $41 million to go to interest cost. If that number were to change on us, we may need more or less of the $41 million that we have targeted today. So we needed to leave ourselves the opportunity to go up over the next two weeks. That number will be solidified for the November 4th council discussion. So I talked about the 2.5% in franchise fee and that the last two years could be paid early. And then also, one of the variables is we don't know how much unclaimed franchise fee refunds there might be, or if those refunds, the unpaid portion, unclaimed, would come back to the city. But if they do, those funds could also be utilized to pay down the debt sooner as well. Diane, if I could get you to come back to this again. And so our future debt needs, how does the franchise fee debt fit into the larger picture of the debt capacity that the city has? So we have $412 million in current obligations today, the 75% that I mentioned, with no more borrowing other than the franchise fee. These numbers are based on the first day of the fiscal year, so July 1st. So if you can go back just a little further for me, Diane. As it gets a little smaller, I can provide this afterwards if you'd like. But the franchise fee at about $41 million would put the city's debt at about 82.9% for next fiscal year. And then over the next five years, it would exceed the 80% self-imposed limit, but then return to less than 80%. Now, the assumption here is that we continue to utilize a little bit of the GO debt capacity for both stormwater and sanitary needs. Again, those are going to be case-by-case situations, so this is not in any way already determined. The idea would be, based on the debt policy, we would keep the capital expenditure debt at under 80%. Let's see, 79% would be how close we would get there. This has annual normal CIP issuances, including our normalized TIF obligations at $30 million a year. And so there's $30 million a year being layered in for our normal needs for capital. And then we have just a couple bond issues that we could utilize utility debt to stay under the 80% for capital needs.
And the $30 million, how does that compare historically?
The last three or four years, that would be the average.
It's been right about the $30 million?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was, by the way, there was a few years ago, a couple, three years ago, the council had a real intentional policy to reduce the amount of debt so you could manage your debt service levy. That $30 million came out of that discussion. So we've tried to maintain that, which is a way to control not only the debt margin, make sure you stay within that, but also to make sure our tax rate didn't go up on the debt service levy.
And just to kind of reinforce this, to make sure it's understood, we would manage that $30 million a year and look on a case-by-case situation for the utilities to stay under the 80%. The franchise fee would be an exception to that because it's not capital issuance, and we would be exceeding the 80% self-imposed limit for five years, as this shows.
Thank you, Diane.
And so for the sanitary and stormwater, I'm showing about $25 million in borrowing needs for the sanitary sewer. We would actually, we need to do a refinancing in a couple months for some old sewer revenue bonds. While we are doing that with the credit rating agency discussions, we might as well get some of that new money issuance taken care of at the same time as the refunding. So we're looking at about a $6 million new money for sanitary sewer as revenue debt, so that's not impacting our GO debt capacity along with the refunding. We'll get the rest of the new money over the next two years as we can fit it in and as needed, really, with capital needs in the sewer.
So how many years would you go out for that, on that basis?
On the $6 million, we would probably keep that around 15 to 17 years.
So it'd be more than short-term then?
Yes. Yes, and the reason for that is we know that we've got another 18 or 19 million of additional needs in the next two years. So we can't get too aggressive on this first $6 million when we need to layer in another 18 or 19 million. And it all comes out of the sewer utility rates, and so we've got to be sensitive to that. $33 million in borrowing needs of stormwater, again, that's like over the next two- to three-year window, so we may get some of that in a GO issuance. GO issuance in the next year or so, and we may then need to issue revenue, stormwater revenue bonds to get the remaining, to get us 33 million. Again, case-by-case situation. But then we also have discussions ongoing about our parking enterprise and the need for resources there as well. So we really need to fit that into the puzzle as well. So we'll be coming back to you with discussions about how best to approach the utility capital needs. Some of that will be discussed in the budget discussions over the next two months as well. I don't want to leave out solid waste as well. Solid waste has new vehicles that are going to be needed as well. So major equipment would fall into the capital needs as well. So in summary, the credit rating agencies, as I've mentioned, are changing their methodology. So that's one situation that I need to monitor and provide detail to you. We have the franchise fee debt at about 41 million, and the proposal in front of you would be that we would treat that as an exception to the capital needs and go over the 80% self-imposed limit for five years. The future capital, though, we would continue to maintain under the 80% self-imposed limit. Kind of where the rubber meets the road, if you will, the debt that's paid by taxes, that's our debt service tax rate, we are still going to try and maintain at the $4.15. Now, that's associated with the capital improvements. So that $4.15 would be difficult to maintain with the franchise fee borrowing. So that would be another discussion we'd have to have if the determination is that it's going to be paid by taxes, the franchise fee borrowing. The $4.15, looking out, excuse me, looking out the next five to 10 years, I feel pretty confident we should be able to maintain the $4.15 for capital need borrowings. The excess capacity, just to put your mind at ease, even with the projections that I've shown here, going up to close to 85% with the franchise fee, we still have 70 million of capacity for emergency needs. And I can't even tell you what that would possibly be because we have insurance policies to cover facilities. So if there was significant damage done to city property, obviously, we're going to have insurance proceeds to help us recover that. And so I just want to put your mind at ease, we have over $70 million at the high point even left over in capacity. And then a reminder again, that on November 4th, the two appendices, the two policies would be asked to be approved by the council on your agenda. And the rest of the policy, what I'm going to do is have the rest of the debt management program received and filed, so that you're aware of it. And as it gets updated, I'll just continuously do a receive and file. But know that the procedures can be very fluid, and since the finance department's responsible for the procedures, filings, and whatnot, those parts of the program may change frequently. They'll always be available to you, but only when we change the two appendices, the council approved policies, would I bring it in front of you for changes and acceptance. So I've covered an awful lot of ground...
Right.
...in a half an hour.
Scott, thank you very much. We have had some ongoing questions as we went along, but Hallie.
Scott, I understand most of this is fluid, so I appreciate kind of the overview as best as we can provide it at this point. It seems a good portion of this discussion, particularly about the council imposed limits and so forth, depend on what the credit agencies do in terms of setting our interest rates when we issue bonds. Do we have a sense of, with the new methodology, are we confident that we're going to maintain the same ratings we have currently? Are they going to go up, down? And then secondly, how does the transparency aspect affect, will that dilute the higher ratings as other cities know that, you know, a 3% fund balance could bump them up to the next? You can fudge those numbers a little bit to make them work. Does that dilute the higher ratings and make it tougher to get a lower interest rate? Or how do you anticipate that working?
Okay. So first off, I feel pretty confident that we can maintain our high credit ratings. Now, what that may mean is, again, a case-by-case situation, maybe not doing as much utility debt as GO. And that's the part, the flexibility that the council and the city has moving forward because those are large capital needs. And so if we decide to forego those, that may be an advantage that secures our ratings if needed. So there'll be an ongoing conversation with the rating agencies. And I think that we have other flexibility and other strong credit factors that will help us maintain those high credit ratings. So at this point, I am not concerned about losing our ratings. It's about how we manage it carefully moving forward and extract, if you will, from the credit rating agencies more of that detail that they're trying to provide and the transparency. On your second point of dilution, understand that the credit rating agencies don't do a bell curve type analysis. If the world were perfect tomorrow, all cities could theoretically be rated AAA. That's not a concern or an issue with the credit rating agencies, that so many have to be bad credits. And so although I would see probably a lot of our peers rushing to improve their factors because now they'll see the numbers behind, I don't know that that harms us in any way. Part of the discussion, though, will need to be what the state does to cities in Iowa because what we are finding is that the rating agencies are going to count the state environment in both legislatively and economics. And so when there's harm done to property tax revenues to cities, the credit agencies have said they're going to count that against the whole state. And so we've got to be careful there as well on what those factors show us.
Mr. Manager?
I just want to embellish on Scott's last point there. In my view, the single biggest threat to our long-term credit status is the revenue picture. So with the legislation that was adopted last year and the reductions in particularly commercial revenues coming into the city, as time goes on, if recall, that was a 10-year program. And as time goes on and we eat into that 10 years and our revenues drop, that will be a factor that threatens our long-term credit standing. And it's something that it's absolutely imperative for us to focus on, that issue going forward. This council has done a miraculous job of maintaining that AAA bond rating over the last several years, really outstanding. But I've got to tell you, there's a threat to that going forward. It's the point that Scott made, and I'm trying to drive home here. Those long-term revenue pictures, not by your actions, but by the legislative actions, are, do represent a threat to us, and we're going to have to really figure out how we're going to overcome that in the coming years.
Christine?
Scott, early in your presentation, you talked about SEC and IRS and all the regulatory agencies. And tonight, we've got an item on our agenda that I've never seen before, and that is a voluntary closing agreement with the IRS on an overpayment, over premium of bond proceeds.
Right.
So my question is, this is something new, so obviously, there's a new direction by the IRS. And why does the city have to pay it? Why wouldn't that be shared with the underwriters and the financial marketing firm?
Okay.
For the financial firm, the management firm that we work with.
Two things.
I mean, it's not a big amount, but it's just, it sets a precedent.
Right. And so what you've seen, first and foremost, is that the IRS, in this case in particular, has put more resources into looking at old debt. And that's why it's come up now as opposed to 2009, when that original bond was issued. And so they are being more particular. And so what they've done is gone backwards and look at when those types of bonds were originally issued, did it follow all our guidelines? Which, when we actually issue them, they didn't have the clearest of definitions of what de minimis amount of premium was allowed. Now, we're digging pretty deep into the detail of individual bond issues when we talk about premiums and things of that nature. So it may be something better offline to talk to you about, to explain further. But essentially, in 2009, which is the norm even today, you're able to receive a premium which gives you more proceeds upfront at the day of sale for a slightly higher interest rate. And that keeps you even with if they had given you a dollar for a dollar of debt and the normal rates. And so it does not harm us to have premiums in those bonds. But the IRS said, well, we think we ought to limit how high those premiums could be. And again, that detail was not clear in 2009 when that was issued. And so what they determined after the fact, if you will, is that we went in excess of $2,400 of that six or nine million, I'd have to look at my paperwork, I think it was actually nine million, bond issue. And so they're really getting nitpicky, to be honest with you on that, to look at nine million dollars.
Does the underwriter still, somebody still got the premium and so...
The city did.
The city got it.
We got that benefit. And that was your second point that I wanted to make clear is, we received that benefit, that $2,400. And there are similarities, if you're familiar with arbitrage rules, on what kind of interest rates we can earn on bond proceeds. So again, we're getting into the weeds here.
That's fine. Okay. You answered my question.
And so I understand that, I guess what I would, my point would be, is I can act, I actually considered that minor, and I was actually disappointed to see that the IRS was spending their times on something of that nature so many years after the fact.
Agreed.
So I have to be concerned moving forward, what type of things they might be looking at.
Scott, I was of the opinion that the market determined the premium on buying and selling of bonds. Now, you're saying that the government's involved too, that you can't exceed a certain premium then?
Yeah, and that's the challenge, to be honest with you, because you have to know that ahead of time what the maximums are that they're going to set so that you can tell the market, oh, and by the way, even though you want to put a high premium on this bond, we can't accept that. And you've got to back down on it. So it's a challenge to work both sides of that. And in this case, again, 2009, we're dealing with the Build America Bonds, which was a whole new program.
Right.
And so they did not have established rules at the time, and yet they were kind of pushing cities to, why don't you try this new bond program we've got?
Thank you very much.
And now they're going back and looking at it.
Yeah.
Well, and worse yet, with the sequester, they're actually not paying the difference like they had promised back in 2009 as well because it's taxable debt, and the federal government's paying us the difference to get us down to a tax exempt rate. And so with all the cuts, they've actually cut back what the feds are paying on these Build America Bonds as well.
By how much?
Well, the 7%, 8%, the different number that they've been throwing out on what cuts will end up. So it's subject to more cuts moving forward, and these bonds last another 15 years. So it's just yet another thing that we're monitoring moving forward. Needless to say, we won't be issuing or putting in front of you any new Build America Bond.
And again, that's spending a lot of time in the weeds, right?
Yes.
But it's like I said a couple minutes ago, it's not so much what you're doing as what people are doing to you. Seems to make our life difficult.
All right. Scott, thank you very much.
I'm available if you have more questions.
Thank you.
We're counting on that, sir. Our next item is to quickly go over the budget workshop schedule to give us an idea of the topics and when we're going to do that in preparation for the budget. Mr. Manager?
Well, I think Scott has handed out, or is handing out, a schedule of topics to walk through the budget as we've done in prior years. It's up on the screen here. And this is going to look very similar to what we've done in the past, but we wanted to give you a sense of how it lays out and what's going to happen over the next couple, three months. So Scott, if you would, we're getting a little bit short on time.
Yeah, so I'm going to make this really quick. It's not a lot different than what we've had in the years past in that we've grouped the utility discussions at the different workshop settings to give you an opportunity to understand. For example, on December 9th, you'll see the workshop on sanitary sewer and solid waste. We've grouped those together. We always try and group the CIP and the infrastructure together with the Dirt Debt Service Fund as well. One important date on here that you'll want to see is, let's see, the budget document will be available on February 7th. And we also have the January 13 workshop, the General Fund Budget Direction. That'll be the date that we actually put in front of you all the changes that are being proposed in the budget for the general fund and see that those are acceptable so that we can get the documents, the final documents in the budget produced for you as well. And so essentially, this schedule will hit on all of the different utilities as well as the general fund, debt service, SMIDS. TIF discussions are included in here as well because they become part of our annual budget as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just overlay on this discussion, Scott mentioned in his prior presentation on debt management, the franchise fee. If the council would decide to call for that referendum, it would be, the first opportunity is March 4, March 4 of next year. That is, that is an interesting date because it occurs about two weeks before the council has to certify the budget to the state. So you have this opportunity for a referendum right before your decision on the budget. If you, if you make that decision to establish a franchise referendum on March 4, you have to back up the dates in terms of when you really start that process. You have to basically adopt an ordinance that provides for that, subject to the vote of the people. If that ordinance had three readings, your first decision on the franchise referendum ordinance would be December 9, followed by second reading on December 23rd, then January 13th, you would actually be making the formal decision to call for that referendum. So I mentioned that just so you think about how those dates lay out in comparison to the budget schedule that Scott's just mentioned to you.
Any questions? Skip?
This January date, public information meetings on the budget, are those town hall style meetings?
Mr. Moore, those would be town hall style meetings. We'll be talking to you about how you want those arranged and the kind of content and approach prior to that date. But yeah, it'd essentially be a town hall kind of process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. We are going to get an economic development update, summary of our current development efforts.
Good morning, Matty. Matt Anderson, Assistant City Manager. And knowing I get a little pushed for time here, I've just done this in more of a bullet point list item rather than a detailed PowerPoint. I've got a green line in there in the middle that's going to separate really the key things that are on your agenda tonight versus just more of an overview of the things that are happening around the city. First thing on your agenda tonight, we've been working on this most of the year, the Seven in the Grand RFP. If you recall, we went through an RFQ process earlier this year, selected three developers to move forward with to a formal RFP. Those developers are Hubble, Opus Group out of Minneapolis, and Ryan Companies. So tonight, you'll be asked to issue that RFP to those three firms, and we'll get that out to them right away Tuesday morning. We've got it set up so that proposals are due January, excuse me, December 20th. I didn't want to have any of those companies have some poor intern working over the Christmas week, so we'll get them in on the 20th. And then a formal recommendation will come to you in, by the end of February, after a staff review and an interview process. There'll be a lot of economic review at this point. The RFQ process was just examining the firm's resume, body of work, abilities to get the job done. And now we're actually getting into, in the RFP, going to get into distinct proposals for what it is they want to do, how they're going to do it, and what it's going to cost them and what it's going to cost us. This is something we've been working in detail with Councilman Meyer on, is the historic Fort Des Moines redevelopment. There's a local group, Doyle Properties. Justin Doyle is the head of that group, a developer most of us had never worked with before. They own a firm here in town on Ingersoll called Modus Engineering. And they're getting heavy into economic, or heavy into real estate development and tackling a pretty challenging project, is one of their first ones in Des Moines, a redo 154 units of the historic Fort Des Moines properties. You'll see in the blue letter that we've used TIF to fund the majority of the financial gap. It's a little odd in what we're bringing to you today under preliminary terms of agreement, there's still a million-dollar gap hanging out there that we're trying to close. What we wanted to do in order to give Doyle Properties confidence, give the current owner confidence that Doyle Properties was moving forward with the city and that Doyle Properties would be able to close at some point in the near future, is get a preliminary terms of agreement before the city council for your willingness to participate in the project. Then we're going to go with Doyle Properties to other potential funding sources, Polk County, other state sources, federal sources, to try and fill that remaining million-dollar gap. But we wanted, the city on the record is first supporting the project to help Doyle with their real estate contract that they have right now. East Village Tower, this is a project being undertaken by Jake Christensen. We, its staff and some development people refer to this as the biggest invisible building in town. It's the 12-story tower out the window up here on the hill. It's the former state teachers' pension investment building. It's the former state teachers pension investment building. It's really gone into disrepair. The mechanical systems are pretty much shot. I went through the building four or five years ago, and it's been sitting relatively derelict since then. And it has an opportunity to introduce 140, excuse me, 103 units of new market rate housing into the East Village, and really bring that, kind of push the East Village to the north a little bit, which is a great opportunity. And we have four state enterprise zone housing assistance applications on your agenda tonight, totaling $71 million and 473 units. And we have a, we've had a lot of discussion about market rate units versus affordable units. 72 of these units are affordable. Basically, the rest, 400 are all market rate. And they're spread around town. We have a project in the central business district. We have the big East Village project. We have the Fort Des Moines on the south side. And we have, we have the Melbourne Apartments' final phase also on the south side. So spread around the metro, new construction, historic rehab, it's a little bit of everything. You'll be happy to see also on there is the Equitable Building, the Faust Brothers taking on that project, 144 market rate units, commercial space on the ground floor and the second floor, and zero city assistance in that project. So very good news to get the Equitable Building back to productivity. And they're, from my understanding, going to start right away. Some other things, just a general economic update of things, projects you're probably aware of, but things going on around the city that are moving quickly. As you drive by the Des Moines Playhouse, a great addition and remodel of the Des Moines Playhouse, kind of an asset in the city that gets ignored a lot, but it's really an incredible facility and program that they have there. Neighborhood Development Corporation, which is financed by the city of Des Moines, had a groundbreaking last week, or two weeks ago, on a piece of property on Indianola that was former city-owned property. It was environmentally contaminated. It's now being developed by NDC for market rate apartments on Indianola Avenue. And I'll back up on NDC. NDC recently opened a project at Southeast 6th and Hartford. It's 12 market rate apartments above commercial space. The market rate apartments are full. The demand in that neighborhood for new housing was even higher than we expected. Quick update on the Event Center Hotel developer selection. We have a group that is city, county, DCA, and CVB that's working with the Des Moines Redevelopment Company to find a hotel developer to develop a 450-room, four-star hotel up at the former Allied Building property, just south of Vets, the former Vets Auditorium. We've got it narrowed down to two developers right now. We're going to take about another month working with them to work out the economics, see which team can bring a package together that we think we can get financed. And we'll be bringing that forward to all the governing bodies. Hopefully, by the end of the year, a recommendation. We won't have final terms negotiated, but we'll have a developer selected. There'll be a lot of heavy lifting to do over the course of the next year. The thing that's really going to allow this to be done is the new State Reinvestment Act, which we worked very strongly with the state legislature and the DCA, and Matt Hinch and our lobbyist, Mark Joyce, to try to get that passed. And that passed. And we're hopeful that that will be the final financial tool that we'll need to get an Event Center Hotel.
Matt, on this last one, just mentioned that the land here for the Event Center Hotel is owned by the Des Moines Redevelopment Company. So it's privately owned. It's not publicly owned. And that changes the process by which.
Yes. Technically, the Des Moines Redevelopment Company is the group that will pick the developer. It's their land, not ours. But we're acting as an advisory body, myself, Scott Sanders, and Roger Brown, working on the city side, and Aaron Olson Douglas also working on the city side of it, with our partners at the county and the DCA and the CVB. Global Spectrum, who owns the event, who runs the Event Center for the county, has also been at the table, because they know the operations. They're the ones that's going to, that are going to have to deal with this hotel operator day in and day out, once it gets built. So we have a good team put together. We've also brought in a couple of very interesting consultants to help us. Charlie Johnson from Johnson Consulting in Chicago, a great hotel developing, hotel financing and operations consultant. And Principal Financial Group was nice enough to lend us one of their in-house hotel finance experts. Principal does debt and equity financing of hotels around the country, and I think even around the world. So they loaned us one of their experts from Chicago, who's come in, sat down in these meetings with us, because most of us sitting around the table aren't necessarily hotel experts, and it's a different animal than me analyzing an apartment complex. And so to have that, those resources available to us have been invaluable. And the county's financial advisor, Piper Jaffrey, has been invaluable also. So we have, we have a really good qualified team working on this. The Norton Hall relocation, many of you have driven by and seen it up on blocks. It'll be about another five months or so, I believe, until all the infrastructure work's done, the hotel is set, all the TIs are done. And hopefully, Jake will be announcing tenants here soon. I know he's negotiating with a ground floor tenant right now. Southeast 14th has seen a lot of, a lot of retail development, and it's, you know, franchises, for right or wrong, get good reviews or bad reviews, but the, seeing strong franchises in your corridor is a sign that the market is strong. Those people do their market research. And when you see, when you see corporate franchises like Buffalo Wild Wings and Dunkin' Donuts coming into your corridor, that's a sign of strength. And so to see Southeast 14th attracting Buffalo Wild Wings, Dunkin' Donuts, the Hy-Vee store, and what'll be the next phase of Melbourne Apartments, very good news to see that on Southeast 14th. That's one of these, one of these points where kind of the rising tide is going to rise all ships. And seeing this much retail activity on Southeast 14th has us excited. Cityville is under construction with their first phase. Hopefully, that will trickle over into River Point West, and we'll see some development activities start to get picked up there. That's one of those areas where everyone's been afraid to be the pioneer, and to finally see construction going in, hopefully, the settlers will follow the pioneers, and we can, we can get some momentum going in that area. But much credit to Hubble Realty, to Hubble Development, to coming in and tackling Cityville. It'll be, it'll be a great project. Broadway Heights in the northeast side, another Hubble project, Phase 1 is under construction. And finally, the Randolph Hotel tenant relocation. We are down to the final three residents. There are, I think, about a dozen that are currently there. About nine of those do have plans in place, have alternate residences selected. They're just going to be in the process of moving out over the next week or so. But there are three more residents that Primary Healthcare is continuing to work with. They don't have alternate housing picked out for them yet, but they're working like crazy over the next week to get those final three done. The goal was, by the end of this month, to have everybody relocated, and it looks like we're going to get there. So very good news on the Randolph. We're excited about that. I can't say enough good about Primary Healthcare and what they've done. The developer, the owner, the city, none of us could have done this alone. We could definitely have not have done this without Primary Healthcare. And the others that have stepped up, United Way and the Community Foundation have been wonderful partners in this. So everyone's working hard. Polk County Housing Trust funds, funds been involved in this. Everyone's doing a really good job, and has come together as a team to deal with these residents. And I think in some post-follow-up meetings with them, many of them are very happy where they currently are. They were not in good living conditions. This was not the place you wanted to call home. And so I think they're getting the attention that they need, not just from a housing standpoint, but from a counseling standpoint, too. So I think it's been a very, very positive impact. That's my quick rundown. There's a lot going on, much like you're going to see Scott over the next few, three, four months, you're going to see a lot of me. There's a pipeline of projects rolling through the city and rolling through economic development that are really exciting. I've got a desk full of things that have me very encouraged of what's going to happen in 2014 and the next few years.
Got a question on yours, Skip?
Skip.
Matt, I'm receiving a lot of requests about a grocery store of some form in the downtown area. And my understanding is the one on Fourth next to Randolph is going to be closing.
Okay.
And I believe a lot of people have been using that. Do you know of anybody taking a look at a grocery store downtown?
I don't. We talk about it weekly. And I do know that there's a local chain that's looked. I know that Tim Leach and Glenn Lyons with the DCA have gone to Kansas City and talked to a local urban chain there. There, I believe, they're headed up to Minneapolis soon to talk to a couple of urban chains there, to try to get them to take a peek at Des Moines. I think you'll get one in the next year or two, but there's still a gap in the market. There definitely is. It's on our radar, but it's really hard to get people convinced. I will tell a quick story. You know, it takes rooftops. And until there's enough rooftops, it's going to take a while to get everyone to focus on a grocery store downtown, and it's chicken and an egg. But I did talk to a local restaurateur who's building a new restaurant in Des Moines, and they said that for the first time in, with their other restaurants, this was the first time that they decided to upsize their restaurant with the number of seats that they had, simply because we're getting the downtown population that's driving demand. You're finally starting to see in the restaurants, the restaurateurs are starting to recognize faces of regulars who are in there on Tuesdays and Wednesdays and Thursdays, when there weren't those people filling those seats. They were just, it was just people dining on Saturdays and Fridays and Saturdays. So we're starting to hit a tipping point, finally. I don't know the exact number. We've got about 500 units under construction right now downtown, and there's at least another 500 in the pipeline. So you're starting to get that tipping point where I think those restaurateurs, or, excuse me, the grocers are going to start to really pay more and more attention. And the important thing is, is that, at least for a certain time, we're only going to be able to support one grocery store. So whoever gets here first is going to corner the market. And I think that's a really important thing, that I think they're, hopefully, they're all smart enough to recognize, whoever gets to the table first is going to control the market.
Matt, one of the other thoughts that has been discussed over the years and seems to be generating more interest is the idea of a public market. We have such success with the farmers market and have, in growing, growing ways. But that is Saturdays, but we're talking about a, maybe a seven-day-a-week public market, and seems to be some growing interest in that.
There is. And we've had, we've just ramped up our discussions with both the owners of the Yonkers Building and EMC, who owns Kaleidoscope, as we look to re-tenant the Walnut Street corridor with retail, putting a more focused effort on researching that public market. It's not like a grocery store where you can go talk to Hy-Vee and Dolls and Aldi and Fairway and say, hey, would you like to come down? There's no, there's no, there's no retailer that just does that. So we kind of have to do it our own. And it'd probably be a DCA-led effort spun out of the farmers market and their vendor relationships that they have now. But we're going to look a little closer at what it would take physically, what it would take from a structure, an ownership structure, an operations standpoint, and what it would take financially to do a public market in Des Moines. I think we are, I mean, we have, we were just voted the second-best farmer's market in the country, so there is an awareness and a demand. And that can fill some of that void for a downtown grocery store. Won't really fill that void for paper goods and some, but it can, but it can fill the void for fresh fruits, vegetables, meats, and some specialty items that could also bring people, not only attract the downtown residents, but bring people from the suburbs, and just like the farmers market does. So we are, we are working on that.
Is the intent to look at the new market district for placement of an indoor-outdoor market?
That, again, another chicken and egg. I think you'd need to, we need to get Public Works relocated before we can even talk seriously about that. And without a timeline for that, I think we'd just spin our wheels. So right now, Walnut is a possibility for that, because of its proximity to the, to the current farmers market, in an effort to revitalize Walnut. I think there's an opportunity, Councilman Moore, where then, as you start to redevelop the market district, and knowing when that's going to happen, that's maybe when you start looking for that second grocer. You have one on the east and one on the west.
Any other thoughts?
I was referring to the indoor-outdoor market, not a grocery store.
Indoor-outdoor market?
Yes.
Not at this point. Just because of the timing with relocation of Public Works and the other industrial uses there.
But the intent is that would be located over here, South Court Avenue?
That is in the market district plan, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Let's quickly open it up. Are there any public comments?
Marilyn Staples, 3509 Calder Avenue, member of the Urban Conservation Committee. I want to thank the council for the hard work you do. The city has come so far in the last 15 years. In regard to the inventory of natural resources, I see this as a foundation for the development of future CPIs for the city parks, city-owned land. I see it as an aid to David Yon's, as he develops his master plan for an urban forest. I would ask that in the process, that there be a means of encouraging new plantings over the first two years. And I use as an example, the plantings that were done on Park Avenue, West of Floor Drive. It was badly conceived, good idea, but the trees were never given adequate water. Some people take good care, others do not. And there'd be some loss of trees that should not have happened. I think that also, we need to set some guidelines as to the concentration of species. We look at MLK and the use of the ash trees, beautiful formations, lovely trees, but also potential cost in the future as the emerald ash bor arrives. And I hope that we can preserve the trees to the greatest extent. I know that David Yon's will be making that kind of decision. So just my comments as a citizen member. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Thank you all for attending our workshop this morning, and we will be back here again this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.